Okay. Time is 5:39 PM and we are following the meeting to order of the Joint Workshop of the City Commission in the Harlingen Water Works, the City Board of Trustees. There is a full form of the Harlingen City Commission and form of the board and so it has been duly posted as required by state law for both organizations and so at this time I'll ask everyone to please scan as. Okay. All right. Commissioner Kinsey is not here, so I'll just go ahead and take his place. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and having the opportunity to gather here to do the work of both the Board of Trustees and the City Commission. We ask that you guide us and help and assist us in doing the work of the people in Jesus' name we pray, amen. And now we have known flag. All right.
It came in handy, it's not a problem.
That's all right.
Even though we don't have the flag, we'll move despite the contribution of the UBS on the commission, we will move on to the conflict of interest. They all be preceded and marked the week of conflict of interest.
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members of the conflict of interest cannot participate in discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any conflicts of interest to dispose of this time?
None.
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 And just for the record, Commissioner Kinsey is not present today, but we do have a forum to read this also.
Same, we're missing one behalf of this one. And the same conflict of interest reads for our board, under state law, conflict of interest exists if a trustee or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item, trustee with a conflict of interest cannot participate in a discussion or vote on the agenda item. Do I have any conflicts of interest?
No.
None.
I think the one presentation by Walton, financial charge, he's related to red water, wastewater, red plants.
City.
Oh, I'm concerned. City, city, city. I only have Mr. Desi Martin. Okay, then I have one more.
You know, eighteen of, eighteen of. If you please see the part that I highlighted, because I was intriguing, that I am an economist and actually have an economist and as you can see in the highlight, I didn't have any data. Huh? I didn't have any data for Water Works, nothing on the website, there couldn't find it except the general terms, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five water meters, meters. That's a whole different, but there were no broken down. I didn't have any, there were twenty-two thousand inside our system, not including the rural, et cetera, but I do have access to some numbers, Cameron County, appraisal district, on structure. So it's not related. It is as best I can give you, the numbers that we have in our service area and my estimate of rural area structures in this service area. As you can see, sixty-eight percent of the structures in our service area are in urban areas, including sixty-eight percent is in the city of Harlingen, city limits, thirty-two percent is in the rural areas. Our system is unique, unlike any other system in the city of Texas. Unlike, there's no other city that's split by the arroyo flow that has its environmental requirements of crossing sewer pipes, water pipes, seven processes and not by yourself, the international boundary. And one of the things of importance in that, there's a project here, fifty million, that's going to cross twice, the arroyo twice, to get to the other side. And I only had no problem. We had talked about this years ago when we were also doing planning for a second sewer plan. It just happened it fell out of the, when the other gentleman on your left, human came in, here we are with a project. A project that has had no study. The other thing is that the importance of this is that a hundred and fourteen years of the existence of this city, hundred and fourteen years, this is the biggest capital of rumors ever, 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 ever. And we have the highest number felt in a state of poverty and in terms of other conditions, study, engineering study, I don't call that a master plan, it's far from being a master plan, it's not combined with city comprehensive plan. An ass of master planner as well, then getting in Brownsville, city of them, back in the seventies. It is important that new policymakers be given information. We're not given information. And I think with him here, they're consultants like I am, I'm somewhere else, but they don't understand the geography first of all. And we have flood, water, sewer problems, and all that is comprehensive. Because part of the study, engineering study, including flooding of our dead stations, we have X number in Harlingen and X number in Guevara, X number in Combs, and we're not even counting those things and the volume and the flood conditions they have on their condition. I ask that you please take some recommendations locally from us that know the grounds, from us that know the laws as well, that do planning with you all in the long term and done some major facilities, the border patrol and the INS and others. And I think the industry will reflect on that and come and look at the brand as doing positive things versus just throwing in the pile. We haven't even finished the, we haven't even finished the flood ten study that the other gentleman is doing. We're throwing in a pile, that's why it's a two-year entry plan. Thank you very much, God bless. I'll stick around, see what they got to say.
The next one is Ron Ossoff.
I think any child of the age, man, that is decided in our area in South Texas, northern Mexico, in span of four or five years realizes that water is critical to us and I'm glad we have Tim right now and I certainly appreciate his predecessor. But we also have a city policy, guideline, whatever, if you don't follow, it doesn't matter what the euphemism is. For instance, when the lakes are to certain level, stage one, picks in at fifteen percent. And I think as recently as last year, we reached such a stage, but we didn't actually publicize that. Other communities right now, this calendar year, are already implementing conservation efforts and that's why I think that even children, the who's I down here, understand Today I got to hear two cases before SCOTUS, Supreme Court of the United States, and one of the non-governmental attorneys actually argued both cases. He's the one that is most regularly of the private specter that's permitted to argue before the Supreme Court, competent, and today he was competent. It's disappointing to know that one of the city's most gifted, most competent, most experienced employees is being scuttled, being directed not to be effective. Yeah, we're human and we have biases and so forth, but ultimately, when you're directing some of your best employees to not perform and to peep, that's going to vote well bad for the city. We will not have a good reputation. So hopefully we can rise above petty stuff and treat people accordingly.
Item number one, presentation by one Dan Financial, so he's related to red water, wastewater, red plant.
So we have Dan Jackson and Alex Shulovich, I think I got that right. And so we spent, we've actually spent a lot of time on this update. We have quite a bit of new information, we've seen a bunch of scenarios already, we wanted to max limit that, so we tried to cull that down to some extent. There were a number of questions that were asked of us to look into and address with this presentation, so we've worked with Phil Dan quite extensively. I think we've got two or three updates since the last time we met, so been a lot of effort that's gone into this. I'm going to turn it over to Dan and he's got presentation and a lot of good stuff to cover.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you all. I appreciate the chance to come before you and talk to you again about the city's rate planning. I think this has been a great exercise on the part of the city and on the part of the Water Works, because one of the things I always like to tell my clients is that rate making is not just a financial decision. You can build the most complex financial model, spreadsheet model in the world, but it's not going to answer basic questions for you. Rate making is as much a social community and political decision as it is a financial decision. That's a very important thing to keep in mind when you look at different rate alternatives. When it comes to water and wastewater rates, there are literally hundreds of different rate plans that you can put into a place that are going to give you the revenues that you need to fund your system. The challenge that you as decision makers for the city have is to decide which is the most fair, just, and reasonable rate plan. That's sort of why that we've gone through some of these different alternatives, because the most ideal rate plan will not only implement the financial goals that you want to accomplish and fund the projects that you want to fund, but it will also, to the best extent available, be the most fair, just, and reasonable plan for the community. I was just telling Tim at lunchtime today, I've had the privilege of coming down here to the Valley for almost forty years now. I know it doesn't seem like I'm that old, but it certainly is. I did my first project here in the Valley in nineteen ninety and here it is twenty twenty-four, I'm still going strong, we're about fifteen cities here in the Rio Grande Valley. So I understand the complexities involved in doing long-term rate making here, here in the Valley. So as you recall, I did my first presentation for the, for both committees back in December. And as a result of that, we got a lot of very good feedback. And the purpose of this updated presentation is to go through our revised numbers based on the feedback that we got to you. But I'm going to present a lot of numbers to you tonight, but there are a few very basic decision points that I would appreciate if you all would kind of concentrate on. The first decision point is how much CIP do you want to fund? In one sense, rate makes pretty easy decision, the more CIP you fund, the more capital projects you fund, the higher your rates have to be. So we're going to present you a couple of different alternatives with regards to how much capital improvement plan funding is built into the rate item. The second is a question of how you want the rates to be designed. One of the strongest feedbacks that we got from the last meeting was the desire to implement a conservation-based rate. That in that the more people, residential customers use, the more they pay. That is intended to discourage excessive water use while still making water available at a low cost to the most needy customers. So we're going to present to you an inverted block rate scenario. Well, we're also going to present a modified inverted block rate scenario that increases your monthly charges. Because one important thing to keep in mind is that for any water system, the vast majority of costs are going to be fixed, okay? So the way it used to be in the industry is that you would put all of your fixed costs into your monthly charge and then your volumetric rate would recover your volume or your variable charges. That's the way it used to be. But the problem is, is that here in the twenty-first century, we are trying to encourage conservation because water is a precious and diminishing natural resource. And so for that reason, you have an incentive to try to make the variable rate as high as possible. Because as, as economists like to say, if you raise the price of something, you get less of it. And that is what the idea of a conservation rate is. But you see, you've got two conflicts here. On the one hand, the variable costs aren't very high in a water system, but on the other hand, you want to encourage conservation, so you want the variable cost to be as high as possible. So that's where the policy comes in. That's where the decision point comes in that you all have to make as to what is the most fair, just, and reasonable rate plan. Finally, the Water Works does have some fund balance that can be used to try to minimize the impact of any long-term rate plan on the, on the rate payers. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about this fixed charge thing a little bit more. Because one of the things that's unique about Harlingen Water Works is that the monthly charge that you charge is actually very low when you compare it to other cities here in the Rio Grande Valley. For your average, for your average residential water bill, the fixed charge here in Harlingen is thirty-four percent of the total monthly charge. As you can see, that's the lowest in the valley. Everybody else has a significantly higher fixed charge as a percentage of their total. That is one consideration that you should take into account when you think about whether or not you want a new rate plan. Oh, is this a plan? Oh, cool, this is great. Great, I don't like that thing shining in my head and my eyes is looking, that's even better. Okay. So as you can see, everybody else has a higher percentage of their monthly charge is fixed. So that is something for you to consider when thinking about a long-term rate plan. Do you want to increase the monthly charge? What is the advantages of doing that? If you increase the monthly charge, there are certain advantages. One is that there's more guaranteed revenue. The more revenue, the more of the rate that is in the fixed charge, the more guaranteed revenue there is, not dependent on weather or anything else. But there are some challenges. The biggest challenge is that if you have a higher monthly charge, that's going to disproportionately impact your low-volume customers. What, that's just basic arithmetic. If you increase the monthly charge from seven dollars to thirteen dollars, everybody pays to thirteen dollars. The low-income people, the middle-income people, and the high-income people. And so as a percentage of their income, it's going to disproportionately impact the lower-income people. So those are the trade-offs that you have to consider when you think about adopting a new rate plan. In picture.
And I'd also like to point out, when we talk about our conservation plan, many other Valley entities will trigger at a reservoir level, the Amistad Falcon system, at thirty percent or twenty-five percent. Ours doesn't trigger until you get to the fifteen percent level. And one of the reasons why that is the case is because of this percentage of fixed charge. If we start implementing those triggers, those conservation steps, it has a much more profound effect on Harlingen Water Works sitting at three, thirty-four percent fixed charge than a lot of these other entities who are sitting at fifty, sixty, and higher. The average is sixty-seven, the median on this list is sixty-nine. And so we're half, we're at the half of that, that median. So that goes to speaking to the fixed charge component and it plays into our conservation plan and where we would trigger conservation stages. So it may be different, you look at Harlingen and why is Harlingen's trigger so low compared to somebody else, this is a large part of that reason.
Okay. Okay. Of course, anytime you do a long-term rate plan rate comparison, one of the first questions that's always asked is, how do our rates compare to other utilities? You know, other neighboring utilities and other utilities around the state of Texas? As you can see from this chart, which I showed you last time also, right now, Harlingen Water Works has one of the lowest rates in the valley. For five thousand gallons of water and wastewater service, the average of residential customers here in Harlingen pays about forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents a month. As you can see, that's below just about everybody else in the valley and it is less than half the state average. So your rates are right now very, very low. That's great. I think that shows that the city and the Water Works, to the best extent possible, have attempted to, to minimize the impact of cost increases on your rate payers. I think it shows you've done everything in your power. Unfortunately, you can't repeal the laws of economics. And one of the laws of economics is that prices go, costs and prices go up over time. And so as a result, there is this constant cost pressure on your budget and on your utility and your costs have continued to go up. What's also interesting about this chart is that several other utilities like San Donito, Brownsville, Mercedes, and even Edinburgh have implemented long-term water and wastewater rate plans in the last twelve months. So they have implemented multi-year rate plans. I know for a fact that Edinburgh did because we did it for Edinburgh. And right now, their rates are going to go up pretty significantly in the next five years because they're facing the same challenge as you are in terms of long-term capital improvement needs for the system. So right, look, this chart is not in and of itself a justification to increase rates and that's not the purpose of it. The purpose is to answer the question, are rate payers in Harlingen disproportionately paying for water and wastewater service compared to the Rio Grande Valley and the state in general? And the answer is obviously you're not. You're lower than most, higher than a couple, but lower than most other utilities. Next chart. And the same thing is true, basically the same type of chart, it shows total annual charges. Once again, you're one of the lowest in the Rio Grande Valley when you compare what people pay on an annual basis for water and wastewater service. All right, just a couple of very great charts here, I know you've seen most of these before. Right now, the system has about twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-six inside customers and about three thousand three hundred outside customers, so a total of about twenty-eight thousand accounts. And you've got about twenty-two thousand wastewater accounts. Our long-term forecast indicates that there is going to be a pretty healthy amount of growth. We're forecasting account growth of about three to four hundred new accounts per year. Now that's generally beneficial. Every new account is a new minimum charge, is a new usage charge, and under the principles of economies of scale, if you're selling more water, more units, then you don't have to charge as much to the people that you're selling the water to. Next chart, please. Okay? As far as usage is concerned, your usage has trended up a little bit over the last five years, but this is an important factor for you to consider when looking at minimum charges, because look at your volumes. Your volumes have fluttered around a little bit over the last five years. That makes perfect sense. In wet years, people use less water, in dry years, they use more water. It's not rocket science. So obviously in twenty nineteen, you had a wetter-than-average year, twenty twenty-three is a little bit below average, so you're not, but the general trend has been up and we're forecasting that the trend is going to continue. And you always kind of use averages, I mean, I can't tell you how much is going to rain in twenty twenty-seven, I wouldn't even try to implement that. Well, what I am saying is that over time, your water usage is going to continue to grow as you grow accounts. Okay, next up, let's go over to the next one. Okay, so let's take a look at some of the alternative scenarios. We're going to show you four scenarios. The first two scenarios are under what we call a moderate delay in CIP implementation. You've got the long-term CIP plan, I know that you've seen it done before, you've seen it in great detail, but under the moderate delay plan, that focuses on overcoming pre-existing system issues and immediate known system limitations. So it's a more restricted CIP plan. The second alternative is your on-time plan, which is a full implementation of the recommended capital improvements as outlined in your master plans. And it is intended to completely overcome your pre-existing system issues. So in other words, your alternatives are either, that we're presenting you tonight, the alternatives are either implement all of the CIP as recommended by your engineers in the master plans or delay back and delay some of your projects. Okay? Working assumptions, all of the CIPs are for a five-year period. And, and most importantly, however, your bond advisor has also presented some input into this rate-making process. The bond advisor advises that any rate plan implemented has to include a minimum of one-hundred-and-fifty days of operating expenses as well as a debt coverage requirement of one-point-four or greater. The, if you do that according to the bond advisor from Hilltop, that will enable you to keep your double-A bond ratio. Now, the, that's pretty aggressive and, at least in my experience, that's a pretty, that's a pretty strict standard. But by doing that, it will enable you to keep a double-A bond ratio that will lower the interest rates on the, on the significant amount of debt that you're going to have to issue. So the drawback is, is that you have to set rates in order to generate enough of that excess cash to meet those requirements, but the good news is it will result in lower interest rates. So here are the four scenarios, and these are just summaries of what the impact would be on the system fund over each of the four scenarios. As you can see, under each of the four scenarios, the debt coverage ratio stays at one-point-four or above and your days of fund balance stays at a hundred and fifty days or above. It actually comes down over the years as you wish you more debt and as your costs go up, but it still stays at a hundred and fifty or above. Scenario one A is what we call moderate delay and your inverted block rate scenario. Okay? So it has the moderate delay, so it doesn't fund as much CIP and it includes a basic inverted block rate plan. Scenario one B is a moderate delay, but it includes the inverted block, but it increases the base charges at a higher rate. Once again, the debt coverage ratio and the water and, and the days of fund balance meet those requirements as outlined by the bond advisor. Scenario two A is the on-time capital improvement and it is an inverted block rate, rate plan. Once again, it's not rocket science. If you're going to, if you're going to fund more capital improvement plan, you're going to have to increase your rate adjustments a little bit higher. Scenario two B is an on-time capital improvement plan with the inverted block rates and increasing the base rates a little bit higher. So next chart. This is the CIP scenarios under, under the moderate delay and the on-time scenarios. As you can see, for either the moderate delay, which is red, and the on-time scenarios, the CIPs are basically the same in the first two years. They start to diverge in the third, fourth, and fifth years, which under the regular on-time CIP plan are significantly greater in years three through five, in years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-eight than they are under the moderate delay scenario. Next chart. Okay. This chart right here represents the forecast cost of service. I could present a lot of numbers to you, which I love numbers, but, but I think it's better to show it graphically. What it shows here is, this is our forecast cost of service under the moderate delay scenario. Right now, it's costing you about twenty-five-point-nine million dollars to run your water and wastewater operation in the current year, twenty twenty-four. Under the moderate delay scenario, by the year twenty twenty-eight, the cost of service will go up, this forecast could go up to thirty-eight million dollars. Now, the cost of service is made up of three components. The first is your operating expenses, which is the blue portion of each water charge. You can see the operating expenses go up modestly. Remember, cost of everything goes up three to four percent a year, just due to inflation. And you try to run your water and sewer operation like a business, you want the revenues from your rates to cover all of the costs of providing that service. And guess what? When inflation pushes your costs up, you have to pass those costs through to your rate payers. So your operating costs are expected to go up. The red portion is your capital outlays. Those are what's known as small-ticket capital items, things like computers and trucks and things like that. In other words, it's a capital expenditure, but it's not something you would issue debt for. You don't sell a bond to buy a truck, you just go out and buy the truck, but it is a capital expenditure. The third portion is the debt principal and interest on the debt that you issue to fund your capital improvement plan. To no great surprise, the green portion of the bar, the green bar is by far the biggest increase over the five-year period. That's because under the first scenario, we're anticipating that you're going to be issuing a hundred and thirty-four million dollars in debt to fund your capital improvement plans over the next five years. It's a, it's a CIP of a hundred and eighty-one million, of which a hundred and thirty-four million will be funded through the issuances of long-term debt. And the thing is, you've got to put a rate plan in place that's going to recover enough revenues to pay the debt service and to meet your coverage requirements. The next chart is the same chart, but under the scenario two, where you fund the entire capital improvement plan, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars. So guess what? It means that the cost of service is going to be higher. Operating expenses still go up, same basic rate, suit capital outlays, but the debt service is about three million dollars higher. So that's the basic difference between the two scenarios. So let's go ahead. Okay, so now I get to show you the four scenarios and then I'm first going to very quickly show you the rates themselves, then I'll show you the more important chart, and that is the impact on an average monthly bill under each scenario. Okay, so let's take a look at the first scenario. The first scenario is moderate delay, in other words, you don't fund all the capital improvement plan and you implement a basic inverted block rate schedule. This is your current rate. For your residential and commercial customers, right now, a five-a-inch meter pays a minimum charge of seven dollars and ninety-three cents a month. As I said earlier, that's a very, very low As I said earlier, that's a very, very low minimum charge when you compare it to other Rio Grande Valley cities. Residential customers also pay a volumetric rate of $1.65 per 1,000 gallons, and they pay a fuel charge of 6 cents per 1,000 gallons. The proposal would be as follows. You would, effective in March of 2024, you would adjust the monthly minimum charge from $7.93 to $8.96. And as you can see, the minimum charges for your other meters would go up also by the same proportion. You would implement a volumetric rate based on an inverted block. For the first 3,000 gallons, you would implement a rate of $1.50 per 1,000 gallons, which is actually below what people are paying right now. Now, the minimum charge is higher, but the volumetric rate would be lower for the first 3,000 gallons. For between 3,000 gallons and 10,000 gallons, you would pay $2 per 1,000 gallons. For between 10,000 and 20,000 gallons, you would pay $2.50 per 1,000 gallons. And for 20,000 gallons above, you would pay $3 per 1,000 gallons. The more you use, the more you pay. One of the biggest benefits of an inverted block rate is that the water use that we call non-discretionary, the water usage that you use inside a house for drinking, bathing, that kind of thing, that rate tends to be billed at the lowest rate. And it's only when you get into discretionary water usage that you're paying the higher amounts. The average residential customer here in Harlingen uses about 7,500 gallons of water service a month, so between 7,000 and 7,500 gallons. So what that means is about 70% to 75% of your monthly bills are going to be 10,000 gallons or less. And what that also means is probably about 40% of your bills are going to be 3,000 gallons or less. So under this plan, the majority of customers will pay between $1.50 and $2 per 1,000 gallons, depending on how much water that they use. And you're only paying the higher rates if you're using above-average amounts of water. In fact, the highest rate doesn't even kick in, the $3 rate doesn't even kick in until somebody has almost three times the average usage. That's the whole idea behind the conservation rate. On the wastewater side, we would recommend adjusting the minimum charge from $62.87 to $690 for 1,000 gallons. And of course, there isn't an inverted block rate for wastewater bill. You would just keep that as the monthly... As the fixed monthly charge, and that would be $4.14. Now, as you can see, in the second year, you would see an adjustment across the board, and then it would be the same in years three, four, and five. So what we're presenting here is a two-year plan with the potential of making it a five-year plan, if you so choose.
On the sewer side, those rates, would you still have the winter average?
Yes. You would still be using the winter average. So you would have the discretion to set a two-year plan, or if you wanted to, you could set a five-year plan. One of the benefits of setting a five-year rate plan is that you put it into place, and then you have a plan for the future, which the bond advisors and all the people lending you your money will see. And that will give them the confidence to keep your bond rating at double A, because they see that you have instituted a long-term plan that will get you the revenues you need in order to issue the debt to do the capital improvement plan that you have outlined. So that's the whole... That's the greatest benefit of a five-year rate plan. Okay. Let's go to scenario 1C. Scenario 1B, you do a higher base charge. As you can see, your base charges go up much more significantly in the scenario. Eventually, your base charge would go from 34% of an average bill to 50% of an average bill over the five-year period under this scenario. What that means is that more revenue is going to come out of the base charge. What it also means is that your volumetric charge doesn't have to be as high. So instead of setting the first block at $1.50, it's now set at $1.25. So it's actually less, because you're recovering more revenue off the base charge. And as you can see, still, adjustments are needed for the next five years. Now, I know there's a lot of numbers here. I'm going to shortly get to the chart that everybody pays attention to, and that is what the impact is on your average monthly user. And you see, the same thing is true on the wastewater side. Your monthly charges would be higher, and your volumetric rate adjustments would not be as high as it would be under scenario 1A. So let's now go to scenario 2A. Under scenario 2A, your rate adjustments, by and large, are going to be higher for each of the next five years, because you're issuing more debt, you're funding more capital improvements, and so your rate adjustments have to be proportionately higher. And then, under scenario 2B, the same thing is true. You're still doing your higher base charges and your lower minimum... Your lower volumetric rates per 1,000 gallons, but it is higher than under scenario 1B. Okay. What does all this mean? I throw all these numbers at you, and you say, okay, what's the bottom line? What do people pay under this scenario? I'm glad you asked, because this is one of the most important charts in the entire presentation. Because under this chart, it shows you what the rate, what the impact on monthly bills will be for a person who uses 3,000 gallons of water and sewer service a month.
You said that was 40% of our users, right?
As much as 40% of users under the Belker methodology. Right now, somebody who uses 3,000 gallons a month pays $30.55 for water and wastewater service. 3,000 gallons of water, 3,000 gallons of wastewater. Under this... Under rate plans, under scenario 1A, if you do the moderate delay, don't fund all the capital improvements, and put it in inverted block rate, that bill would go up to $32.85 in the first month. That's an increase of $2.30 a month. It'll go to $37.12 in January 2025. That's an increase of $4.27 a month. And your increases would be $4 to $5 a month under each of the next three years. So your average bill would go from $30.55 up to $51. That is about a 7.5% increase in the first year, but it is about an 11% to 13% increase in each of the next four years. I don't always like to use percentages, because you've done such a good job of keeping your rate so low that any increase of any magnitude at all from a percentage standpoint is going to sound really high. You know, if you were charging $1 a month for water service, and you increased it from $1 a month to $2 a month, that's a $1 a month increase, but it's a 100% increase. So that's the problem with percentages. That's why I tend to prefer talking about it in terms of what the actual dollar impact would be. And so what we're talking about is about $2.30 a month increase in the first year, and about a $4 to $5 a month increase in each year after that.
$20 increase.
Over a five-year period. That's correct. It would be over about a five-year period. But you're also funding almost $200 million of capital improvements. And so... Yes, sir?
So a question on that. Have you calculated interest payments on borrowed money?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because today's... What, 20-year bond?
Yes. We're using an interest... We're assuming an interest rate of 4% by now.
Today's double A rate is 3.45. It's down five basis points from last week.
Well, I'm a... Since I got my master's degree from the University of Chicago, I'm a monitorist. And the problem with being a monitorist is that you tend to look at inflation very carefully. And there's a lot of people right now thinking inflation's going to tick up this year. And if inflation ticks up, interest rates are going to tick up. That's why I think right now, I would recommend that you keep the 4% assumption. Let's keep our fingers crossed. Heck, one of the great things about implementing a five-year rate plan... See, you implement these plans based on a series of assumptions, because forecasts are not guarantees. It's predictions based on a series of reasonable assumptions. And so if you implement the five-year plan based on a series of assumptions, and then a couple of years goes by, and it turns out that interest rates aren't as high as what you anticipated, your growth is greater, your expenses aren't increasing as much, maybe you don't have to issue as much debt as you thought, then you can always come back and adjust the future rates. You know, a council or a commission always has the right to adjust rate plans that have been put in place. But at this point in time, any rate plan is based on the best information available at the time, and this is what we think is going to happen. Let's see, you know, what ends up happening. Who really knows what's going to happen over the next five years? I mean, who knows what the country or the world is going to look like five years from now? Certainly looks different now than it did five years ago, didn't it? So all we can do is project based on a series of rational and reasonable assumptions. But anyway, so let's now look, if you keep the moderate delay when you do the higher base charges, you see, for a 3,000 gallon user, the impact is more significant. The bill goes from $30 to $33. A $2.81 increase, but then a higher increase in the future years. Once again, that's just basic arithmetic. If you increase the base charge disproportionately, and you only use 3,000 gallons a month, your bill is going to be higher proportionally than it is under the inverted block scenario. That's the art of ratemaking. I always like to say ratemaking is as much an art as it is a science. And there are all these different factors that you have to consider when you look at rate plans. The benefit of increasing the minimum charges, it's more guaranteed revenue, less dependence on weather. The downside is, is that it is going to be a higher, a more disproportionate impact on lower-volume users. Now, let's take a look at scenario 2A. And then, as you do all the capital improvement planning, and you do an inverted block rate, your bill goes from $30 a month to $33, and eventually up to $56. So over a five-year period, the difference between delaying some of the projects and doing all of the capital improvement projects recommended by your engineers is an impact of about $5 a month for your 3,000 gallon user. That's the trade-off. Is that worth an extra $70 to $80 million of capital improvement investment for the city? That's the decision that you face based on the information presented to you today. So, and then if you do the higher base, of course, the impact is not... is higher, but not significantly higher. So as you can see, these four different scenarios will show you what the impact is on your very, very low-volume user. Now, let's take another... Let's take a look at what happens for a more average user. Somebody who uses 10,000 gallons a month of water and 5,000 gallons of wastewater under the winter average. What would that impact be? Well, under your scenario 1A, it was a moderate delay and an inverted block rate, that person... Right now, that person pays $50.06 a month. Under scenario 1A, that bill would go from $50 to $85 by 2028, over a five-year period. Under scenario 1B, if you do a higher base charge, it goes from $50 to $88. So as you can see, if your usage is higher, the impact of the higher base charge is not as great. Once again, that's a basic arithmetic. And if you do the on-time scenario, where you fund all the capital improvement plan, your bill would go from $50 a month to $94 a month by 2028, whereas, under the inverted block with the higher base, it is actually a little bit less.
And these numbers, compared to other valley cities, are still reasonable?
Well, it's still... Yes. It's still significantly less than the state average. Because the state average is about $100 right now. And I can guarantee you... I can virtually... I mean, nothing's guaranteed except death taxes and the cowboys losing in the first round. But I can almost guarantee you, and I say that as a die-hard cowboy fan, you're from Dallas, I can almost guarantee you that almost every city in the valley is going to significantly increase their rates over the next five years, because they're all facing the same pressures you are. Costs are going up, systems need to be repaired, replaced, and expanded, and the money's got to come from somewhere. And so your rates are still... Your rates five years from now are still going to be below the state average today. So they will be higher than they are right now, but they will still be below the state average, and they will still be below a significant number of other Rio Grande Valley cities. Okay. Let's take one...
Real quick. I'm sorry. Hey, Dan, when you talked about the on-time, doing the on-time projects, you said that it may be a little too much for your staff, and you'd probably have to bring in some other... A little more staff, and then probably bring in some companies to do project management, right? Do these numbers include those inclusions?
They do not. We've given our operating costs what our budget has been, and so a lot of our costs... I mean, Will Dan has inflated those, or they have projected those increasing over time. But I think even under the moderate plan, we still are going to have to staff up. It may be something less than what we would have to do under the on-time plan, or we would not need to turn a consultant to do as much. The on-time plan would be a challenge for us to execute. There are some unknowns about funding from the Water Development Board. Are we going to qualify for grants? Or is the environmental work that we're going to have to do for projects that could potentially delay things out of our control? And even within our control, you know, are we going to be able to keep up? If there was an interest in pursuing the on-time plan, one of the things that I would definitely recommend is that when we come and present our fiscal year 2026 budget sometime in August or September of 2025, that would be a good opportunity for us to come and say, okay, we're on the on-time plan, and here's what the rate adjustment would be. Here's the progress we've made. Are we behind, or are we on time? And if we're lagging for whatever reason, we could make the decision to say, let's skip the next round of adjustments for the next year, or do some fraction thereof. And so instead of your on-time plan being a five-year plan, it becomes something more like a six-year plan, or maybe a seven-year plan. There are some advantages, I think as Dan was talking about, you set forward a plan, and that's... It's got some forecastability to it. I think that that's really the only way that I... We would feel comfortable with the on-time plan is if we could have those annual budget reviews starting in 2025, say, where are we? Do we need to slow things down with the rate adjustments, or leave them as they were programmed or adopted in the original rate ordinance? That's my take on the on-time bill.
So hopefully, this information will, once again, provide you with a decision point to make. I mean, as I said at the outset of this presentation, it really comes down to two decisions. First, how much capital improvement plan do you want to implement? And secondly, how do you feel about an inverted block rate versus an inverted block rate that increases minimum charges, all that much more? In other words, is funding the additional $70 to $80 million of capital improvement plan worth customers paying this much more? I mean, rates, under any circumstance, to fund any measure of the capital improvement plan that's been outlined in your master plan, rate adjustments are going to be required. They're going to be required to meet operating expenses. They're going to be required to fund the capital improvement plan. So now, the question becomes just, how much do the rate... How much of the rate adjustment do you want to be? How much is tolerable? How much is appropriate at this time? Every city has a different opinion as to what that ultimate decision is going to be. As I like to say, I worked for some cities that have incredibly low rates. They have low rates because they don't do any capital improvements. Is that a good way to run a system? I mean, yeah, you've got low rates, but your system's about to fall apart. So what I've always tried to tell my clients is that the properly-run system is a system that not achieves, not strives to have the lowest rates possible, but achieves to reach that balance between low rates and investing in your system. So that's what we hope that these schedules will provide you some basis on which to make that ultimate judgment. So I just want to focus on the last couple of issues that were brought up and briefly discussed at the last meeting. What involves the potential of what we call a senior citizen rate? This is something that is done by some utilities around the country. Right now, in the city of Harlingen, approximately 28% of your residential customers are 65 and older, who would potentially qualify for a senior citizen rate. What some cities do is they offer a discount on the residential rate for a senior citizen 65 years or older. What is that discount? There's really no set precedent. It can be whatever you want it to be. It could be 10%, it could be 30%, it could be 50%. It's whatever you want it to be. But because it's not a cost-based decision, it is a policy-based decision. How much relief do you want to give senior citizens? What are the advantages of doing that? Well, obviously, if you provide a discount to senior citizens, you're giving them a tangible financial benefit, you know? And that particularly is going to be the case for your fixed-income residents.
Do you know what percent of the 3,000 or less users are senior citizens?
I can't tell you at this point what that specific percentage is. Generally, senior citizens tend to use less water. It's not always the case, because there are always going to be senior... Some senior citizens with large lots, who... So it just... It just matters. But obviously, a retired couple living, or, or a retired person or a couple living alone generally is going to use less water than a family of four or five.
Are you aware of any other city in the valley that does that?
Oh, you should ask. There are only a couple, surprisingly enough. We did look into this. FAR, for example, provides a sixty-one percent discount to senior citizens. Yeah, I was, I was shocked too, that's high. My, in my general experience, hey, yeah. In my general experience, a senior citizen discount is somewhere around ten to twenty percent at most, from most of the cities I've worked for. West Laco has a thirty-five percent discount for water and wastewater. Mercedes has a thirty-two percent water discount and a twenty-four percent wastewater discount. Oh, and the West Laco discount is on the base charge only. So, yeah, that's, that's all we were able to identify. Surprisingly enough, most of the cities in the valley don't do it, but some do.
But those three cities have more winter taxes come down.
They have some big retirement.
So that's, and we're retirement committees.
Well, with taxes going up, you get less of the behavior. The taxes going down, you get more of the behavior. So if we offer a sixty-five older, we can get more winter taxes.
We used to have them, they left. How do you imagine that?
So, Mercedes and West Laco?
Thirty-five, they're thirty-five.
Mercedes, Mercedes was thirty-two percent on water and twenty-four percent on wastewater. West Laco, on the base charge only, is thirty-five percent water and wastewater.
Thirty-five percent?
Right. And FAR is sixty-one percent on the base and volume charge. So, like I said, there are some advantages. However, there are some, there are some challenges with regards to the senior citizen rate. For the first place, in the first place, you have to identify who the customers are. Secondly, it would, it would apply to anybody sixty-five and over. So if Bill Gates had a retirement home in Harlingen, he would theoretically apply or qualify for a senior citizen rate. Secondly, there is a potential for fraud. What I've seen for some, in some cities where there has been senior citizen rate is a person will sign up for service in his grandmother's name. And so, and therefore get the senior citizen rate even though grandma isn't really using the water. And then finally, you know, if you, if you give it to one, you have to take it away from another. And that is that if you give one group a break, you have to do a slightly higher adjustment on the others.
Can I, can I ask something real quick? And that's it, they're still alive on the accounts?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I'm not playing, like, that's, you're still alive, because they leave them still on the account.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, so, so like I said, it's a policy decision you would make based on, you know, the advantages and disadvantages of what you consider to be most fair, just and reasonable.
And I would, you asked a question about where does twenty-eight percent fit? The three thousand consumption, and this is going back to a summertime bill, but three thousand gallons represents about twenty-two percent of our residential consumption.
Make sure that sounds reasonable.
Twenty-two percent.
Okay, but it'll be a higher percentage of those. Because that's consumption.
Well, this is, this is twenty-two percent of our, of our customers.
Okay, all right, that's a little higher than I thought it would be.
That's, that's, that's in the summertime. So, if your senior citizens are twenty-eight percent and what fraction of your overall customer base that would be in that zero to three thousand, you can't really back that number out, but you definitely have more senior citizens than you do have those three thousand gallon accounts.
Okay.
And that's, that would only apply for the three thousand or less users. If you have a senior citizen that uses more, would you still give them the discount or would it only be limited?
Yes.
It's age-related, not usage-related.
Again, you can structure it however you want. You could, you could do a senior rate only on the, on the monthly charge. You could do it on the monthly charge and the volume rate. You could do it only on the volume rate. You have great discretion as to how you would structure it.
Do any other cities have like income-sensitive type bills?
I'm not aware of any cities in the valley that do. I know some cities have, I have had some client cities that do that. They, the, they try to do what, they call it a lifeline rate. So what they do is they try to tie it to somebody's income. But once again, that, that puts the city in the position of having to verify the income of the person applying for service. And, you know, sometimes that's easy to do, sometimes it's not so easy. There is also the, once again, the fraud risk. And that is the person signs grandma who's on social security up for service and presents her social security check as income and conveniently forgets to show his own income. So there is, you, you are in the position of having to verify what the household income is and that can sometimes be considered to be a challenge.
I should probably notice, but I don't. The Housing Authority, each individual tenant has their own bill or, do you know?
I don't know. Respect to that question.
So, so potentially, we could identify those that are in housing at their minimum to provide some relief to those, because those are the ones that we want to transition out of housing and not, you know, and, and they may have more usage because they have children. Is there a way for us to implement something like that? I just, I, I mean, it's great to, to look forward to the senior citizen discount, right, that you get everywhere once you, you turn that age. But the reality is that there are many folks in our community that I know that are of that age and that are doing just fine and don't need assistance. Not that everybody, I'm sure there are some that need it, but I, I thought that I had asked at the previous meeting that I'd like to see something in terms of, of income. And maybe that's a way to identify them without having to check, because the Housing Authority has already done that or to determine that.
So you don't, you're only applying that?
Do we have Housing Authority catalogued in our accounts? So we could identify those?
So you'd only apply that to those specific areas?
Like, those facilities will only get it, but if you live in Section Eight housing in an apartment complex, you would not get it.
No, I would say anyone that is under the Housing Authority.
So anyone under Section Eight would get it?
That would be hard to, I know, Section Eight?
I, I don't know. And what I'm saying is I, I think that's a, if that is a way to identify in your system where you don't have to do all that extra additional administrative-type work, that is something worth exploring. And it could be something temporary, it doesn't have to be permanent. We want to transition people out of, of housing. I think that there can be some kind of incentive or a certain period of time. I, I don't know. But I think that that's something that we should be looking at because if we want folks to be able to get out of housing and to be able to get into homes so that way there's people that are waiting in line to get into those homes and we are increasing by twenty dollars over the next, you know, five years or even more so, I think that that may be, that may be an issue for some, some folks in those situations.
Very poor metrics, thank you.
Next chart. And once again, I'm just about to the end of the presentation, I just want to bring up one other issue. And that is the issue of wholesale rates. Right now, you have five wholesale customers. That has been good for the city, because again, water is a bulk commodity. So if you have additional customers, you're selling more water to them, that by and large will benefit the system as a whole, because the more revenue you get from them, the less revenue you have to get from everybody else. Most, you, most of them, they're all under contracts. Most of these contracts are going to expire pretty soon. That gives you the opportunity to renegotiate your wholesale rates. Because right now, you're charging a wholesale rate that is a real bargain to them. It's, it's basically below and a fully allocated cost right now. And so, in any new contractual arrangement, you might want to consider doing a new rate. For example, right now, for one of your wholesale customers, their volume charge is basically tied to the commercial rate. It's a dollar sixty-five right now. Under the proposed rate plan, it would go up, as you can see, in a manner similar to what the commercial rates are. However, the cost of service rate, the fully allocated cost of service rate is significantly higher than that. Now, I would not recommend that the city immediately implement a full cost of service rate to your wholesale customers. The rate shock would be too significant. But I would recommend that you consider phasing in a higher rate over time. Now, the question may be, well, how did, how could you end up with a, you have a volumetric rate right now under the current contract that would be two dollars and ninety-one cents by 2028. The full cost rate is four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Isn't that significantly higher? Well, yes, however, your, the effective rate for a residential customer is even higher than that. A residential customer's effective rate is five dollars and forty-five cents per thousand gallons. See, when you're a wholesale customer, you don't pay all of the costs of the system. You don't pay for the retail lines and you don't pay for the billing costs because those costs are not used and useful to you. But, the cost is greater than what you're charging them right now. So I would recommend that once your wholesale contracts begin to expire, you work out a new contract that allows you to phase in a rate that is closer to the cost of service rate.
On a step-up basis?
Yeah, on a step-up basis. I wouldn't do it, look, the problem didn't, the problem didn't occur immediately, so don't try to solve it immediately.
Okay, I have a two question.
Okay.
Is it true we still have lots of water rights and we sell them to other cities?
Well, we don't sell off our water rights, we maintain them. It may be, and we're going to do this with East Rio Hondo, we're going to basically rent them our water rights in a given year. Like, this year is not looking good for them. Reservoir levels are twenty-one percent at this time of year. And they've got a challenge getting water from the river to their location. They go through the Resaca system in San Benito and they're assessed a seventy percent loss on their water rates. And so they run out of water. So now they're looking at us saying, can you sell us some water? And so, we're looking at, we're looking at that.
Raw water.
Raw water.
So do we sell or give water, raw water to any other cities?
We haven't in quite some time. Sometimes a farmer, we've got some ag rights and so we lease those on.
We've not sold any to FAR, McAllen, or Edinburgh?
Now, we've, in terms of the permanent rate, we want to hang on to that. Because, but it's that annual, when we got surplus, why not lease that out?
On your, on your previous slide, on your wholesale wastewater customers, you had, can I go back one? Yeah, you have Tom and Combs, is that expired already, 2016?
Yes. We're just in a holdover period with the rates that were in place at that point in time. So we knew we were coming up on our master plan and so now we've got a rate set to tell us where we should be charging. And so we've just been holding over with those rates, even though that contract has expired. We just have to pull a number out of thin air at that point to have updated that.
How long have these contracts used and for?
They can be a long time. East Rio Hondo's got a forty-year deal with us. Combs, I think, has got a forty-year deal that's expiring. So there's only factors of nineteen.
At a certain rate?
Yeah.
Well, and so we tie most of them. There are some exceptions here, but we tie most of them to the inside-city limit rate, which is the same regardless of commercial or residential. In, in the scenario that's being proposed at the inverted block, you'd be looking at the commercial rate and that's what's being reflected on that overcharge. So that's, that's a good way to tie it to something contractually. Otherwise, you're going to have to try and predict what those rates are going to be. And so we might say, we're going to charge one-hundred-and-ten percent, one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent, for example, of the inside-city limit commercial rate. That's just an example of how you might do it. But I think there's going to have to be a process of looking at those wholesale customers. They have other options. They can go to East Rio Hondo, they can go to Alamo, they can go to Cameron Regional. And so, if we were to do a full cost of service adjustment for them, I think there's a high risk we would lose them. And that's not a good thing when you're rating agencies. They like to see wholesale customers because it presents great stability. So I think we're going to have to proceed really carefully with that. The rate plan, as Dan is showing it and the numbers that are baked into the models right now on this, on this line here, you're going to end up at two ninety-one. And so in my mind, that represents the floor of what you're going to charge them. And then the cost of service would represent the ceiling. So you could end up anywhere in the middle. But I think we have to look at what those other utilities are charging or what those other wholesale opportunities recharge them. I don't think you want to lose them.
Do those, do those communities, like Combs and Pre-Meda, do those municipalities make additional revenue per?
They mark up.
So, so if?
All of their rates have already increased.
Yeah, because I, and I'm just asking because I know a lot of folks that, that tell me that especially, I think it was on Wilson, I guess it's Pre-Meda, that their rates are really, really high already. And so I wonder what this is going to, to do that, to, to do to that. And is that something that we can negotiate? And we don't want them in, increasing their rates so high that it is, it's burdening their customers? Because it's a lot, I, I mean, I think it's almost double the cost of Harlingen water. And so folks are like, well, we want to be annexed into the city of Harlingen because we don't want to pay the water bills, to that extent. But we're not going to do that. But, but my point is that's what customer, that's hurting those customers.
But on the flip side, we don't want to give our water away. I mean, as time goes on, our costs go up, shouldn't that be reflected in their base rate?
Right, so we, if they can, if they're, they can obviously, you know, they're making money on this and maybe they can reduce that, that rate on the, on the customer in, in terms of negotiating so that way we're not going up that much.
From what I'm understanding, it's like you want to dictate to them how much they charge their, their customers.
Well, I, no.
I understand, I'm asking for clarification.
Not necessarily. I'm saying, we're over here saying, hey, we got to be careful. We don't want them to go somewhere else because it's going to be too much. But clearly, you know, they're making, they're making money off of it. And so if we charge them more, then they're going to charge their customers even more. I'm just, I mean, I know that this is the city of Harlingen, but, but ultimately, I mean, they're our neighbors too.
I think they've had some water problems, I think David can attest to that. They had some plant problems, so they've had to raise their rates because they keep messing up. Tim's had to say them a couple of times.
I, I remember we talked about, those issues of not wanting to pay their?
So it's, the cost of service, is that what it costs us to produce that water? For them, yes, that's correct.
So then we're essentially subsidizing the water?
And then they're making money off of it. So that, that's what's burning.
Yes, I, I think you can make that, but remember, remember, not to get too much in the weeds, but there are two types of costs. There's allocated costs and then there's marginal costs, okay? When you're, think about it this way. Let's say you're living alone in a house. Somebody, I mean, your, and your buddy wants to move in with you. And you're paying, you're paying two thousand dollars a month for rent and your utilities, okay? Your buddy wants to move in with you. Well, he's living in your house and you're living in your house, and you should. His fully allocated cost is a thousand dollars. But, he only wants to pay you three hundred dollars a month. But you see, it's not costing you any more to have him move in. It may cost you a little bit more. Your heat bill might be a little higher, a few dollars here, a few dollars there. It doesn't really cost a lot much more. So even if he's only paying you three to four hundred dollars a month instead of the full thousand dollars, it's still benefiting you because you're still getting four hundred dollars, three to four hundred dollars a month that you didn't have before. That's the same position you're in right now. Because you see, it's, the marginal cost of this water is not that much. But, you're getting less than what you're entitled to get because you're entitled to get a fully allocated cost under rate-making principles. But you may make a very astute business decision that you're not going to charge a fully allocated cost because if you do, you might drive those customers away and you might drive them to another, to another utility. And then you don't get anything.
Mark, can we constitutionally even do that though?
Sure.
Because, no, we can.
Sure you can. Because we're giving something for free.
It's a question of what, well, no, we're charging them, but what he's talking about is the difference between an allocated cost on paper and something in an actual cost, right? So is that actually costing you that or is it just a bookkeeping issue?
So what's it actually costing us? Well, the fully allocated cost is, right now, about three dollars and forty-one cents. That's allocating the, all the full portion of the system to them, okay? The mar, I haven't calculated what the marginal cost is, but it's a lot less than that. Because the marginal cost is only your variable cost. It's only your electricity and your gasoline and other variable costs. Remember, the vast majority of costs of the water system are fixed, okay? Salaries, you don't, you don't pay your general manager anymore as much as you'd like to if you have more customers. You pay them the same amount.
So the wholesale, the wholesale customer doesn't pay for all the costs of the system? It doesn't?
No, he does not. Because he only pays for what's used and useful to him. And for example, all the little re- And for example, all the little retail lines, all the small lines that go into the neighborhoods, that doesn't serve a wholesale customer. So he doesn't have to pay that.
So the question is, what is, what is our actual cost for the wholesale customer? And are we charging the wholesale customer less than what's costing us?
You're charging them less than what you're entitled to.
But that's not my question. My question is, is it, is, are we giving them less, are we, are we charging them less than our actual cost?
Are we breaking?
You are benefiting, you are charging them more than what your marginal cost is. You're charging them significantly more than what your marginal cost is.
And we ran our marginal cost a few years, four, five years ago and it came around 70 cents per thousand. So maybe today it's at 80 cents, but we charge them inside city limit rates, which is higher than the marginal cost.
What's our total revenue?
If we play the whetted game, they're not going to go to East Alamo. They're not going to go to East Rio Hondo. And Tim knows that because East Rio Hondo gets water from us. East Alamo, that's a lot of trouble to get water. Where really could they go?
North Alamo.
They have North Cameron Regional, which is a partnership between North Alamo and East Rio Hondo, and that sits just north of Primera. They could go there and get their water. Now, that's using reverse osmosis, so that's going to be a higher dollar. So this 291 is still probably lower.
What's our total revenue from all these producers? Our total revenue that we make from all those customers, wholesale customers, only on the water side?
I don't have that.
I know.
I mean, we're going, we're going rate, we're raising rates on our residents. We need to raise our rates when it comes to our wholesale. Everybody has to pay in this, in this situation.
Right. The current contract ties you to the inside city commercial rate right now. But when the contract expires, that gives you the, the flexibility to set a new rate for them. And, um, once again, it's up to you.
Forty-year contract, who thought of that?
And, and all honesty, that's not, that's not unusual. In the water business, people like long-term contracts because it's not like you're going to stop using water anytime soon. And you tend to like to have that kind of security for a multi-decade period of time. Many, many water wholesale contracts I deal with are 20, 30, 40 years. That's not simply unusual.
But, but you can still escalate the rates for years. You know, you can, but they want to stay inverted block.
How are rate increases provided at some of these four-year contracts?
That's what he's saying. Is that. The ones that you have or the ones in general are charged our own?
In your experience.
And that we charge our own? In, in my experience, the way they do it now is they set a rate provision that says the city will charge the cost of service that occurs for providing service under AWWA rate-making methodology. That's it. One or two sentences, that's it. The reason is that, is that AWWA methodology evolves over time. And so if you try to set a formula in a contract, then after 10, 20 years, that formula tends to become obsolete.
All right, let's, let's all just one at a time because, Tim.
Okay, so the question that came to me was, how much do we collect on the water side? I haven't had the water and sewage.
For my wholesale, wholesale customer.
Wholesale customer billing for 2023, fiscal 2023, uh, was $923,000. And so the total, when you combine retail and wholesale, was $10.6 million. So that's about 8.7% of our water charge for water revenues came from wholesale.
But that 10 million includes the hardest residents that are paying.
Yes, yes, includes everything. Total revenue for us, 10.6, including retail and also.
Those long-term contracts that we have, like the four-year, you have them so that we can adjust for inflation?
If you, and so with East Rio Hondo, it's problematic because it says inside city limit rates. So that's going to tie us to one specific number. So most everybody's on inside city limit rates, but there's a couple, like I think maybe Combs has got a little bit of a higher rate that was picked in.
We're going to, we're going to adopt the escalating system on the inside city limit rate. So we're going to charge more so that.
Yeah.
It's going to be built into the contract.
Right. And assuming that you don't make any changes to the contract, if you adopted a five-year rate plan under, uh, your, your rate would go up from $1.65 right now to 291. That ties it to the percentage increase of the commercial cost.
Excuse me, do you, do we have any MOUs with our wholesalers when it comes to grant writing? Talking to lobbyists and consultants to get funds for CIPs?
We've tried, we've actually tried that with Combs and Primera. Combs and Primera are not disadvantaged anymore.
Personally, I find that a little difficult, but it, it's, it's something that I can't seem to find the right example. In other words, maybe, I, I know you have your people looking at this, but if you were to look, go through a different set of eyes to look at your grant writing, I can give you a perfect example, all right? A number of years ago, I found myself at the Academy, Naval Academy. Apparently there was a missing funds of about $25,000. And the only one who counted the funds was a colonel himself, but he had just flown from across the pond. What he was doing was counting twenties as $5 bills and everything, we were under investigation for that. Once he settled everything, went to the bank, boom, the funds were there. Nobody stole any, anything. Not the contractors, not the mission, but they were there anymore. So the, the reason I bring that up is because if we're having issues with getting some, some grants, and I do realize, and I spoke to him before I came out here, with, with the new lobbyists, this information that I have, I'm going to forward that to him so he can start eyeballing things and see where he can find some loopholes with the, uh, EDAs and SWPs and state and, uh, USDAs and try to retrieve funds for our community, the whole region. So that example happened. So I, I'm asking, then you should have asked you in private, is get somebody else to eyeball the paperwork you're doing and see if we can get some funds to come this way. Not long ago, Combs got not one but $2 million for wastewater issues. And that was through GLO. That was Combs. Primera got a million. Rio Hondo got a million. Santa Rosa got a million. So, and I'm thinking, why didn't we get it? All right? We could have used that because all of that was tied into the losses in, in 2018 and 2019 when we had those severe storms. For whatever reason or another, we didn't get anything. So somebody dropped the ball. Uh, what I'm asking is, let's get a second set of eyes. You're doing a great job, but sometimes, just like my buddy over there, Gerald, he messed up.
So are you, are you accusing them of being incompetent?
No, just like my buddy turned around and miscounted funds. You get yourself a second set of eyes to look this over, they're liable to find, tweak it, and then we get it. I'm not accusing him of anything and I'm not accusing my buddy 15 years ago that he did wrong.
We're, we're, we're open to, we're open to anybody pointing us towards funding that's available. But when we attend Water Development Board seminars and the federal government, the state looks at Water Development Board, that is the agency that knows how to do this. And so the vast majority of funds, maybe more than 95% of all the grant funds and subsidized funds that come through for water and sewer typically go through the Water Development Board. Bureau of Reclamation has some others that, you know, we can pursue, but they have to be conservation-type, type projects. Vicente Gonzalez had some earmarks and we went after their community action. We, we applied for that as well. If somebody can point us, I mean, we're, we're coming up on progress. This is, this week, we have to submit our applications for this next fiscal year for the SRF programs, federal SRF programs. So our, we already know what those projects are. We submitted them last year. We're going to submit them again. If there are some other opportunities out there, by all means, we're open to pursuing them. But when we go to conferences like Water Development Board seminars and then last year, Water Finance, some of you made, I'm trying to think, Rubenstein, he was on the Texas Water Development Board, he's now got his own company. And so he and his group came and presented, put on a big conference in McAllen and they brought everybody who has potential funding offers. And so we looked at every single one of those and in many cases, there are usually lower population limits, we've got to have less than 10,000 population. We have, I would say that we have looked and done our due diligence on everything that's out there. I don't hold a lot of confidence, but that doesn't mean that we are opposed to looking at other options. If there's another set of eyes that can help us find some, some money through the GLO, we absolutely want to do that, so.
Well, I do have a comment about the GLO. I've dealt with it extensively in Camahad. Those grants were for ladies, for, for, that's what they, that's what they got.
Because Combs used that for water wastewater.
And they're usually matching grounds.
I'll double check. Can we get back?
So yeah, I wanted, thank you, but I wanted to circle back on a comment that, that Daniel kind of asked about it and I wanted to wait until we got to the end. We are at the end, right?
Yes.
From the moderate, moderate delay and the on-time, it looks like what I'm hearing from you is that we can't consider the on-time because you don't have the ability to execute based on stacking issues and things of that nature. Is that right? So that way we're not, we don't want to set you up for failure.
I wouldn't say we can't, but I will say it is a challenge and I think we need to have a safety relief valve to say if we're not getting there, then we should roll back or just do a portion or half, one year's adjustment and then defer to that. Effectively, your five-year rate schedule could become a six or it could become a seven. One of the challenges too in pushing things back is that all the capital improvements that form, that are gone into this are based on late 2023 or early 2024. There is no escalation in those costs. So the further in time you go from time zero, the more those projects are going to cost.
Right, which is why I was leaning towards the on-time because I think that, you know, we need to do it and it needs to get done. But if, if, if it can't get done, I want to be realistic in what we're asking of you. I'd rather have a plan that we can stick to and we know that we have the ability to execute versus one that we're going in and we're not sure and we may have to change that. I, I, I like to have a plan that we can truly feel that it is our master plan and this is what we're doing and what we're telling our residents, we can fulfill that. And so that's, that's the challenge for me. I want to be able to fix the, the issues because they're not just issues, they're, they're, you know, substantial improvements that have to be made and some of them have to do with public safety, right? So we want to make sure that we're, we're doing it. But it sounds like we've gone through all of this, but we can't do it.
I think we can do it, it's just going to take them to hire more staff and then we're going to have to hire these project managers, which is a good thing, right? Because the reason you want project managers for these things is that the onus is on them to make sure that the project is completely done correctly, right? And if there's a screw-up, then you not only hold the construction company liable, but you hold the project manager liable as well. And if both of their services are on.
And I, and I think that's great, but, I'm sorry, Mike. The issue is, these are not those numbers then if we're adding in additional costs to be able to do that. I think that we should do that and we, that's what we should be looking at if it's possible. And I think that's a responsible way to do it and to ensure that it's done right. But what are those numbers? Are those different numbers? They're different rates? And we didn't take that into consideration.
There are many uncertainties. What the interest rate is going to be is an uncertainty.
I understand all that, but specifically to what, just because I want to kind of flush it out and go home. But Daniel's asking in terms of, we can do the on-time. I think that the commission, I don't know, that's how I feel, but you want to make sure that we, we tackle it. I know you do. And so, and I'm sure everybody else. So we want to be able to do on-time. And if we're going to do that and we're going to provide the resources, not the resources, but you are going to need to get additional staff specifically in order to tackle the issue and to have contractors that have the ability, that's going to cost more money. We, the, this rate plan was based not on additional help, right? This was in-house.
What I would say to that is those costs that we're talking about are a small, small fraction of a plan that has a lot of uncertainties and assumptions built into it. And so, yes, you're going to, you know, you're going to look at those absolute dollars and say, well, we're paying, you know, $300,000 a year on a construction manager. Well, compared to the 258 million, it's.
So my question is, is when are we going to stop daily dialing around and showing them?
Well, there, no, actually, and they've got to do what is on their next, it's on here, I saw it, we're next, next step, scheduled town hall meetings, all this type of stuff.
So we got to take action.
Yes.
The costs are going up by the week.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So in terms of, in terms of our outreach, we now have a Twitter, X account, we have an Instagram account, we have a video ready to publish, our website and the webpage where we're going to put all this rate information, including our capital plan. We're looking at going live sometime within the next two weeks. And when we talk about the town hall meeting, our consultant also needs to take whatever direction the commission gives, finalize the report and we want to put that on the website. Once those things are done and the, and the public has access to them, then we can advertise the website. We can talk in a town hall meeting, we can give a presentation and refer again and again and again to the website where people can go get that information. So I think in terms of a timeline, everything's coming together. And so we're now within two or three weeks of being able to have that town hall meeting.
So what is your recommendation?
I would, you know, I was asked that question.
Not the long-winded one, just like, you know, which, which.
One, two, three.
Yes, what plan?
Which door?
You know, I, I would, so I would recommend, I would recommend, just, just to put it out there, if, if it sounds like the commission has appetite to do it, I would recommend that we do the on-time plan. But let's understand, there needs to be a safety valve because there are things outside of our control that may not allow us. Environmental, Water Development Board funding.
Storms.
Yeah, that's the realistic. But then, are you talking about on, the way I'm looking at it is on-time inverted block or on-time inverted block with a higher monthly charge?
I, I really, I mean, you saw the table, we're at 34% and everybody else is averaging 67. However, our cash on hand is sitting at 150, 155 in the worst case. And so that gives us some buffer. But if we have a big tropical storm, we have a winter time storm that comes through, I have a desire to raise the base rate, but that 150 days of cash helps. And so those, they're bigger numbers definitely when you look at the extra base rate.
So then on-time inverted block with a higher monthly charge.
That's, that's the high, that's the true. I'm going to give Dan a lot of compliments because he has a difference of opinion on the debt service coverage and on days working with cash on hand. Our financial advisor has given us their recommendations, talking to the S and P people that Dan considers pretty conservative. But we have the most volatile revenue outlook of any utility in the valley because of where our, where our base rates are right now. So if you want to take a conservative approach, then I would say it would need to be the high, the high plan.
Our financial people love higher base charges because it guarantees weather. I think it doesn't depend on weather.
Yeah, I think we just need to do that. And I agree with the mayor. We need to look at, what would you call it, a lifeline? Let's see, well, I, just give us some options, at least so we can see where we stand with that.
Right, I just want to know.
Great.
So we're talking, maybe, maybe explain that. We're talking about what type of housing that we should be looking to potentially, section eight housing, house housing?
So in, in, in an ideal world, I don't know what your system looks like, but I know that the, in some of these housing developments, they go to the main office, pay a water bill. So I would assume that there is some accounting mechanism that each, like we're talking about with the casinos and Amoy Gardens and those different areas within, within our community. And then we have the section 8 housing, anything that's under the housing authority. If we're able to identify them easily, what would that look like if we were, we were to take what we were gonna do with the senior citizen, but apply that to, would be the low income? That would be the ones that are living under the poverty guidelines in our communities. We don't have to check tax returns or anything like that because they have already been identified by the housing authority. As much as we would like to help everyone, I think this would help the most vulnerable, and it would give you an opportunity not to have to invest so much time with your staff to really do that. So maybe reaching out to Hilsa, I'm not sure what that looks like or what your system is able to.
What I, I mean, in asking, so the number of those customers probably isn't going to represent a big impact on the overall plan and the increase.
I understand.
But I guess what I would say is if we want to do the higher base rate, then you're looking at $1.25 per commodity, and that would be a rate that we could use to charge those customers. And that's a pretty, and, you know, regardless of what their consumption is, if you, if you fall under that housing authority.
Like a cap, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's your volume rate. Instead of $1.65, you'd be paying $1.25. I don't know, if you pick that up, that's a huge, that's a, that's 0 to 3,000, it's a much lower rate. And so we could simply take that cross-section of our customer base to the extent we can identify and say, well, you're in a special class, you're gonna get that $1.25 applied to all of the commodities.
And maybe our plan is for the next, you know, we're doing this for the next two years or five years, and then it ends up at that time. Like, it doesn't have to be indefinite, I think, you know, there is transition.
Mayor, there is a program, CA cost flow just walked out. For those who need assistance.
Yes, yes.
CA, yeah, and we have that for those who need it. So.
But they have to be at the point of cutting off their water, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that.
That's also a large percentage.
Huh?
That's a large percentage for us also that are on that verge. So if they have a large bill, CA.
That's for anybody can take advantage of it, right? So what I want to make sure is, you know, people that are already not making enough to put food on the table, that they're not having additional $20 on their bill because that's, that's a lot for them. And it's gonna be the folks that are in that, you know, that category.
Well, I, I guess, folks in section 8, hub housing, you're always gonna have those folks. So I'm, I guess maybe I'm just not following on the, the idea of making it a temporary thing and then you're gonna drop that program.
I'm saying, I don't know if that's an option that you want to present. I don't know. All I'm saying is that I want to ensure we are going to adopt an aggressive approach to this to be able to make the improvements that we need. Give a small segment of the population that may not be able to afford it. And so to make it plain and simple for people that are, that are struggling already, I don't want it to make it additional hardship, financial hardship for them where they're not able to pay their bills because we're raising their, their water rates. Because these folks maybe cannot conserve as much. Maybe they got several kids in the house and they gotta bathe them, and they've gotta, you know, there's things that, I think that we can take care of them, but also work towards.
And we can do that, I guess I'm just trying to understand why, why we would just do it for a period of time and then stop that program. I would think that would be a continuing.
At issue meant individually, like, say you're someone that lives in the housing authority, and there could be a cap that you'd only be able to spend, like, say, a year, two years, and that's it. After that, it would go to the regular rate.
I don't want somebody living in housing for 10 years, and then they are, you know, they can't, they, we want people to transition out of housing. We don't, I'm not saying that it's going to be a temporary.
It runs with the customer, not the housing.
Yes.
And I think that that's something that the housing authority can, can assist with, right? Potentially, and not, not waterworks or, I, I mean, I don't know, you just see how long. I know that you can find out, because everybody tells me, right? You pay a deposit and you have your, your, your water bill forever. And so you know you've been a customer for 20 years, 30 years. Maybe there's some kind of privilege that this person has this, whatever we call it, lifeline or, you know, type of a structure for five years. Well, you know what, maybe we need to revisit that. That's what I said.
I think there's just the one concern I would have is like, I have like a whole neighborhood in my district. It's Spanish Acres where they can all essentially use the program, but they're not in section 8 housing. So then how do you, how do you?
Where's the line?
Yeah, where's the line, right? Like, I have people in Orange Heights area that can't do, right?
If there is a way, I agree, I agree, but what Tim expressed, that it would be difficult, right? For you to be able to have the ability for your staff to be monitoring that and to be able to check that. That, that's the rea, that's the only reason. I agree. I wish we could.
How about Tim? Why don't you look, you kind of are getting what a vibe of what we're wanting. Why don't you and Dan get together, figure out other options, and then present the options for consideration?
On March 1st?
Which is why, that's why we're gonna do that at this meeting, but maybe I didn't make myself very clear last time, but.
Mayor, just to clarify, we were gonna go with the on-time with the inverted block at the higher base. For the 3,000 user or less, that's a $30 increase.
Or eight, five years.
Oh, with the five years, but that's, if you take the cumulative dollar amount, that's 100% increase of their base rate.
What Dan told us, that within so many years, the whole state can do 150% increase. It's gonna be high. In a percentage standpoint, it is going to hire us in the average increase.
We can't prepare ourselves to the average of the states because we're in some sectors.
Right.
Right, right.
And the states have a higher base on, remember, they're at $100. So a 5%, a 5% increase for them is $5 a month. For you, a $5 a month increase is a 20% increase. So that's why I hate using the word, I hate using percentages.
And I agree with you. And so what I think that what we're missing here is once, now we've told you what we want, what, what, you know, the commission, unless, you have something different?
No.
So we know that that is the, that is what we want to adopt, right? And then we're gonna go do all the great stuff with the outreach. That's what we want to do, if we can see a, a graph with, once we adopt that, where are we in relation to the rest of the Rio Grande Valley? So that way, we can see that Harlingen, in fact, even adopting this most aggressive approach, we're still, you know, in line or less than most of the Rio Grande Valley, which would be great for us to see. Because I know based on your numbers, even our neighbors in San Benito are much higher than we. Yeah, so I mean, I'd like to see, maybe we do this, we adopt this, and we're still lower than San Benito. That's something I want to know.
Now, that is another joint meeting, or I'm just trying to figure out, do we proceed?
No, we'll leave it just for that.
You can just send them this information to, to Gabe, and then we can, yeah. But the sooner, the sooner the better. So that way, I think we do need to have a meeting with action, so we to give them the ability to do the outreach, which is not in a workshop.
Well, because we have to choose either the on-time or the delay, moderate delay, and then we have to face whether the higher base rate or not. And that has to be said, and then maybe we're just prioritizing and take that to the public.
Right, so.
I would do that next Wednesday.
So my.
Next Wednesday is our next commission meeting. So if we need to start moving.
If, well, if you give it to us, we will read and study and be ready, and, yeah.
Yeah, we'll distribute that, but then I think there's a process where you want to hold the town hall meeting before you have your first ordinance adoption. And so that's probably still going to be, before we get to that.
Right, next Wednesday, I'm just gonna provide a recommendation for which rate. You're right, once we adopt the rates, it's gotta be done through the ordinance.
So we give him this recommendation as putting it on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what the commission wants.
Is that what you're suggesting?
But if you're saying to me, if you turn off, no, no, that's, that's.
It's just a recommendation so that they can do that.
And then we start, after all that's done, we still have to come back and the commission has to take action by adopting other ordinance.
Which means that I, I need at least three days to review it. So it can't be on Wednesday because I won't be ready, so.
Not either of me?
I need time.
So it's probably the second meeting of March, then we're.
No, this meeting.
Next week, so I need to have something reviewed this week.
Right. It's just, it's just so that way we can give you guidance on what to do so you can start with the town hall meetings, right?
And then we'll have to look and see what those customers in that category would be and how that.
We have faith in you, Tim.
And you're gonna show us a comparison, just to make sure. You're gonna show us a comparison with, even if we go this well, what we're gonna look like, Mr. Edinburgh.
Yeah, we, Brian, get that done in no time.
Edinburgh, I, I follow that, and you helped.